I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will have our school committee and members report tonight. The chair could not be here tonight. The mayor is at dinner honoring some students who have worked in Fitchburg and he is at that dinner tonight, so could not make it. Resource committee, we have not had a meeting. School building needs, we've been meeting on the Crocker School and the Long Joe roof and those are going very well. We have selected the architect for the roof at Long Joe and that's moving forward. And the Crocker School, Bob, do you want to anything about the Crocker School today, the meeting we had today that we're just moving?
Yeah, I think the Crocker School has passed its air test as of last week, so that means we move from the abatement phase now to the, I guess, the assessments and repair stage. So over the next couple of weeks, our plumbing contractor will start testing the plumbing and heating system in the single-story wing and see how the water flows and then from there start making plans to repair the school and also the electrical work and the lighting. We did tour the facility today with the insurance company, their contracting firm, and our HVAC designer. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have a timeline and project plan to, you know, return students as soon as possible, but with the goal of having at least some returned by the beginning of school in September.
Thank you. Policy committee, anything tonight?
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Who is the architect that was chosen?
Habib and Associates.
Habib and Associates.
I'm sorry.
Habib and Associates.
Habib.
Habib and Associates. Have they done work for us before?
No.
No.
Where are they from?
They're out of Norton, I think, or Norwood.
Norton.
Norton.
Norton. And was there much of a competition for that job?
There were three that we interviewed.
There were nine firms that submitted proposals.
I'm sorry.
Yep, there were nine firms that submitted proposals. We narrowed the field down to three and we interviewed the three firms.
And why was the Habib chosen?
I think they really understood Fitchburg, what we were looking for in terms of a solution. They'd done the most homework, being prepared for the meeting, and they would be ready to hit the ground running, which they have been.
And this is kind of an aside, I'm not sure it fits into what we're speaking of now, but you mentioned the water situation at, was it Crocker?
Crocker, right.
Yeah. And then I read in the papers, preparation papers, that there are students here from WPI that are working on the city on water issues?
On stormwater, yes.
Stormwater exclusively?
Yes.
Does that connect with the Crocker situation in any way?
Not at all.
No.
No.
Okay.
Nothing on the policy committee, student report?
Okay.
What time?
Yeah, we met in between our last general meeting, so briefly, I just.
Okay, Aiden, if you'd like to.
Are you kind of student support? We actually, I'm not on the policy committee.
Oh, right, so neither, so yeah.
Shannon Craig.
Yeah, Sally's not here. So we did meet. We talked about the discrimination policy. There was a couple of policies that were pertinent to hit first. We're kind of going through the whole policy book. I think the biggest load of that work is going to be done over the summer because there's a lot to do, but most immediately, we had a couple of policies that had to be going over. We have to meet again to have the school district's attorney present to kind of read over our edits and make sure everything's up to standards. But moving forward, I guess we'll schedule the next meeting for pretty shortly after the DEES review and then move forward on that. Because I don't think we actually had, Bob, did we have the first reading of that?
No, it's not on the agenda tonight.
Right, so, right. So we have to meet again to finish that.
All right. Anything on student support?
Well, this would normally be the week we'd schedule, but with DUC coming in for the review, we thought that all of you would be in a lot of meetings all week, and so we're looking to put a date together for next week to follow up on some of the information. Nothing new from last check report.
Okay. School personnel, we have been meeting with several of the unions and we are making progress and hopefully that will continue to go well. Executive committee, nothing, student reports. Lisa?
Okay. So we're going to start off with Fitchburg High School relay races are going to be held May 17th at 6:00 PM at Crocker Field. Mathematic MCAS is going to be held May 23rd and the 24th, all sophomores and some juniors that either didn't have qualifying scores or didn't take the test. Graduation will be held June 1st at 6:00 PM, Crocker Field, weather permitting. Fingers crossed it's outside this year. For any student who received a no-credit grade for any class on their quarter three report card, they will have to develop a buyback form, which they can obtain through guidance in order, so they have like a 59, which would replace their no-credit for the class. The Red Raider Report, there is an online newspaper that our journalism class has created. A special thanks to Emily Hill, class of 2018, and Ms. Gothier for the event and making sure that we have an online publication now. North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce scholarships, congratulations to three members of the Fitchburg High class of 2018 for earning scholarships. Each scholarship is worth $2,000 and is a great recognition for the students. The students are Nicole Gonzalez Rodriguez, Hannah Nealan, and Sharon Nelson. The National Merit Scholarship Program, Junior Samuel Bedrow qualified for the National Merit Scholarship. He scored in the top 50,000 of over 1.6 million PSAT test participants in the fall. And the NMSP will determine its finalists, but it is a tremendous accomplishment for Sam at Fitchburg High. The SATs will be held May 5th. It's not too late to sign up. The deadline is April 25th. The class of 1968 made a generous donation and we'd like to thank them for, I think they donated, yes, benches, Red Raider benches in the main foyer of the high school lobby. And the donation continues a tradition of alumni given to the current students in school. Barnes &amp; Nobles My Favorite Teacher, Tabitha Greenlee has been selected by Barnes &amp; Nobles as a My Favorite Teacher Award recipient. Logan Cormier and who was Charlie in the production of Willy Wonka wrote an impressive essay detailing Ms. Greenlee's impact on her.
That's huge.
Mount Wachusett Community College Arts Awards, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people that, six people that received an honorable mention and one senior received the cash award first place. Mr. Mercado, he earned the Massachusetts ACT champion for the second year in a row. Each state selects just one person for this important and prestigious recognition, so it is even more impressive that Mr. Mercado has earned it twice. Yeah.
I think we should be applauding all of them.
And Mass Insight Partners in Excellent Award, Advanced Placement Biology, Laura Bolick. Congratulations to Ms. Bolick, who is recognized by Mass Insight Education as a partner and excellent award recipient for exemplary work in AP Bio. She is one of only 29 Massachusetts AP teachers recognized for astounding contributions to student success during the 2016, 2017 academic year.
Impressive one. I feel like we should be applauding all of them.
I know.
May I ask a question, Lisa?
Yes, of course.
Is the link to the newspaper on the FHS site?
I'm pretty sure.
I can look that up after, but I just was curious.
Yeah, it's just redraiterreport.webly.com.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, for the newspaper, I've acquired a red and gray, which I will be giving to Mr. Roach from 1935, which is very interesting.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I acquire things from the alumni and that and I send them on.
Yeah, that's nice. I'm pretty sure the benches are going to look beautiful in the foyer.
Aren't they? Yes. That was class of 68.
That was a nice event.
Yep, very nice.
Matthew's going to give some upcoming events.
Matthew?
So the staff of dinner will be on Thursday, April 26th. The SAT will be administered on Saturday, May 5th, and prom will be held at Wachusett Mountain on Saturday, May 5th, and the Fitchburg Public School Gala will be held at Fitchburg High School on Saturday, May 5th at 5:30. And tickets can be purchased for $50 from Superintendent Ravenel. And Jimmy Tingle will be performing and the proceeds will be going to after-school programs. So there will be food, cocktail hour, entertainment, and silent auctions. And advisory will be on Thursday, April 26th. The Special Olympics will be, for Unified Track, will be Thursday, April 26th and 27th, 8:30 to 9:00 on Thursday and 8 to noon on Friday. The AP Saturday session for science will be 8 to noon on Saturday, April 28th, and FHS prom, I already talked about. And AP test will be on Monday, May 7th to Friday, May 18th, so morning or afternoon sessions.
Any questions for our students? Thank you. We have approval of our April 2nd meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are going to have an executive session tonight, but it will be at the end of the meeting. Communications. Any public comment? Public comments are limited to five minutes. Any members of the audience wish to comment? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. So just to recap, because I think it's important and I think we only applauded the first, so because it's really, I think it gets lost in the shuffle, but we have three of our staff members who've been recognized beyond Fitchburg. Tabitha Greenlee's by the Barnes &amp; Noble for her work in music. Albert Mercado, again, for the work he's done on the ACT test and, I think you said, second time, out of a small group of people in Massachusetts. And then also Laura Bolick, which it was at Mount Wachusett this year. Jeremy and I attended and it's where Mass Insight, who's been one of our partners now for over five years, recognizes teachers who have had exemplary results in working with students in AP testing, so let's applaud all of them. And speaking of Tabitha, there's an online, I nominated her for the Bach Center Music Award, and it's on our Facebook page and you can go there and click on her photo and vote. I think the voting is still open, the last time I checked, so that's something that anybody can do. And I learned you can't do it twice, not that I would have, but they already capture your vote, so that's good, good stuff. And then thank you for mentioning the gala, which is going to be Saturday, May 6th. Tickets are going. We can hold about 250 people.
May 5th.
May 5th, right. And we're up to about 180, 190. The crowd is for 250, so people should contact our office for that. Now, we're going to do something a little bit different. We have a robotics presentation, and the nature of the robotics presentation is that it has to be in a large area. So while we've been starting the meeting, they have been setting up the robotics presentation, so, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, we'll.
That's okay.
We'll go to that and then to return and that's over.
Okay.
Cafeteria?
Nope, right in the lobby.
Oh, in the lobby.
Yeah. And the reason it's out there is they're setting it up to show you exactly how they would set it up. So we have had this partnership with WPI. Paula has been kind of working with her staff, so I'm going to let her do the intro and set it up for you.
So thank you, Superintendent, school committee members, and folks watching on FATV. This has been a very exciting project. It's a collaboration between the school department, the Fitchburg DPW, and we have our lead liaison from DPW here tonight, and staff and students at WPI. And it's been about seven weeks. Took a little longer to get it planned, but it's really looking, having this group of wonderful WPI students look at the issue of stormwater runoff, education, and environmental stewardship aligned to our science standards, and then in the course of their work, developing project materials that our teachers can use to teach, so that they're in the district working now, but their legacy will remain in the district with student workbook, teacher workbook, list of resources, and other materials. So to kind of talk about the project, I'd like to introduce Jessica Stadalski, who's our STEM facilitator, and she'll introduce the team and the project.
So I've been working with a team of STEM support specialists in the district over the past seven weeks, but prior to that, towards the end of last year, we were introduced to this idea by Jeff Stadalski from the DPW and Nick Erickson, who are co-sponsors of this project. So they brought WPI, Fitchburg Schools, and the DPW together to work on this project, which is really focused on stormwater and stormwater runoff, and it helps to honor our permit, our city wastewater consent decree, and the stormwater MS4 permit. So the work that is being done by the students from WPI, and we're just getting ready to conclude that work next week, they're in their seventh, going into their seventh week, so that work has provided us with materials that we can use in the school system as teachers that align with the 2016 Massachusetts Science, Technology, and Engineering frameworks, but also support the work that's being done in the DPW and around stormwater. So I'm going to turn things over to the WPI team. So the team consists of Tom Cutron, Sean Burke, Mike Cook, and Cialo Sharkis, along with their professor, who is also in the audience. Cory Denner is here as well, so she was their supervising professor at WPI and has been working with us over the last few weeks. So I'll turn things over to you to present.
So, good evening. As Jeff said, we are a group of four students from Worcester Polytechnic Institute, and we've been working to develop a new science program for fifth graders within Fitchburg Public Schools. Over the past seven weeks, we have closely worked with the Fitchburg DPW and Fitchburg Public Schools, and tonight, we're here to present our project to you all. As Jeff's already mentioned, I'm Sean Burke.
I'm Tom Cutron.
I'm Mike Cook.
I'm Cialo Sharkis.
And the title of our project is Stormwater Runoff Education and Environmental Stewardship.
So the main goal of our project is to instill environmental stewardship in the students of Fitchburg Public Schools through the use of our stormwater education program.
So, for anyone who doesn't know, stormwater runoff is any rainfall or snowmelt that is not absorbed into the ground and is therefore forced to flow over land to nearby lakes, rivers, streams, and often cases, storm drains. This is very common in the urban environment where impervious surfaces such as parking lots, streets, and roofs are closely packed together and they're found everywhere. Now, the main concern with stormwater runoff is pollution. Trash, sediment, fertilizers, animal waste, oil are all common pollutants found on our streets. And when stormwater runs over these impervious surfaces, it collects these pollutants and then it goes into the local storm drain. Now, this storm drain is part of a larger system, as Jeff said before, MS4. For the long hand of that is municipal separate storm sewer system. And the key word here is separate. This system is largely separate from the sewer system and therefore does not transport the water to the sewer treatment plant. As a result, the stormwater, along with the pollutants, does not get treated and is dumped directly into local water bodies such as the Northern Ashua River. Now, the EPA acknowledges that stormwater is a large pollutant, especially in the city environment, and in 2003, they established their first MS4 permit. But more importantly, in 2016, they established an updated permit, which is extremely more comprehensive and extremely more stringent. They outlined six control measures, or what basically are approaches, that municipalities must follow in order to reduce stormwater pollution. And for the purposes of this project, we focus on the first control measure. So the first control measure, as you can see here, is titled Public Education and Outreach. And what the EPA wants municipalities to do is to outreach to four audiences, residents, commercial businesses, developers, and industrial facilities, to educate them about stormwater runoff and what they can do to prevent stormwater pollution. Now, because residents are the largest audience out of all of these, our project focused on outreach to these, to this group. Now, I just want to ask a question to everybody. How do you think recycling became a household, a common household practice? Can anybody, anybody can answer.
Is it Mass Perg? I know that's who.
I don't know what that is.
Oh, it's, it's the group that was knocking on my door all the time, telling me that I needed to recycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is anybody out?
But wrong answer, obviously. That's the last time I answer.
Oh, take a risk. Maybe like in the city, you know, kind of in the mountains? And bins and just made it easy?
Yeah, that's definitely one of the answers.
Landfills are filling up too quickly.
Okay, I'll take one more, I'll take one more.
I think probably when WPI students came in the classroom.
So, those are all great answers.
But they're all wrong.
So actually, so during the 1970s and 1980s, the EPA really focused on outreach to younger generations. And I remember when I was in school as well, we had a guest speaker come in and they talked about recycling, what you cannot recycle, what you can recycle, wash out your plastics, yada, yada. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to educate residents through the education of students. And that was the focus of our project. We wanted to develop a program to educate students about stormwater, so that they can go home and educate their parents, whether residents of Fitchburg. Now, the all-important slide of project impact and how will this benefit Fitchburg Public Schools. So throughout the course of our project, we wanted to create materials that would be of immediate use to your teachers and educators. We spent a lot of time adhering the resources to the 2016 Massachusetts State Science, Technology, and Engineering Frameworks, as well as the eight science and engineering practices. We also infused elements from local outreach organizations such as Mass Audubon, and we also were very thoughtful in catering to ELL students and special education students, which as we know are a large population within Fitchburg Public Schools. And then the second goal of this project was, we wanted to empower students. We want to empower students to be environmental stewards in their community. We want them to go out into their community, take water samples, and really pioneer what it means to be environmentally responsible, and really just pioneer science within their local community.
So to separate our project into various goals, we created three phases for our project. First phase covers preliminary research, and that was our main research on the MS4 permit, and we got a lot of help from Mr. Fred Sivian, the Massachusetts Stormwater Coordinator. From there, we researched the Massachusetts STE frameworks to try and parallel our education program with what's existing already in Fitchburg Public Schools. From there, phase two of our project was the development phase, and we worked with several outreach organizations throughout Fitchburg and Massachusetts to find existing stormwater education that we could build upon to make our program. From there, we developed our student handbook and teacher handbook that the students and teachers will use in the future at Fitchburg Public Schools that will encompass all of our stormwater education. And lastly, we implemented our project with the Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Lemonster to try and determine what a various age range of students would feel about this added education program for Fitchburg in the future.
So throughout our project, we focused on a few findings. Our first is that there are several obstacles to education that exist in Fitchburg. One of the things we found that teachers are often in really high-stress environments, and this is due to a number of factors. The first, being there may be a shortage of ELL teachers. So there are 700 English language learner students within Fitchburg, so having a shortage of students creates a high-stress environment for them. Secondly, we found that there's a high turnover rate of teachers, so we found that within two to three years, a lot of educators leave Fitchburg Public Schools, which may make it difficult to have this long-term educational program. And lastly, we found that there's a strict time constraint within classrooms, and this is likely due to MCAS prep and the constant reviewing of material for students. So because of this, we focused on supporting both the diverse students of Fitchburg Public Schools and the hard-working teachers through the use of Parallel Resource Guides. So these guides were created to create individualized learning for the students and also utilize educator support to create specialized lesson plans for individual classrooms. So throughout this project, we created our three main deliverables, as we call them. The first was our Educator Resource Guide, the second was our Student Workbook, and the last one was our Runoff Randy Educational Video for fifth-grade classrooms. For our Educator Resource Guide, we focused on the finding that there's a big high-stress environment for teachers, and because of that, we created three distinct components for our Educator Resource Guide. The first was a Community Resources Index. Now, this is something that was based upon the connection that we found that there's a missing connection between local outreach organizations, such as the Nashua River Water Association, and the Massachusetts Audubon. So what we created was a Community Resource Index that really highlights programs within the local area that teachers can use for things such as field trips or guest lectures. Secondly, we created our Curriculum Guide. This adheres to the 2016 STE frameworks and the eight science and engineering practices due to the fact that teachers face these tight time constraints. And lastly, we created an Educational Support Index due to the fact that teachers need a lot of support, and what this focuses on is professional development and connection between educational professionals such as Jessica Stadalski and also environmental professionals such as Fred Sivian, who's a stormwater expert in the area. So for our last deliverable, or our second deliverable, the Student Workbook, we also focused on creating three main components. The first was focusing on interdisciplinary chapter content, since students often struggle with math and science. So what we did there was we used scientific, we used mathematical models, scientific content, and creative writing. For our next component, we used simplified vocabulary and a glossary to cater to the 700 ELL students within Fitchburg. And lastly, we focused on creating group-focused problem-solving activities due to the fact that students thrive in cooperative education.
So our last deliverable is our Educational Video. It's a short, five-minute Bill Nye the Science Guy-style video featuring our main character, Runoff Randy, played by me. It covers stormwater basics, where all the water goes when it rains, what an MS4 system is, and how the water ends up in our nearby water bodies. From there, he goes around Fitchburg, finding people doing common bad practices, and he provides them with environmentally friendly solutions for those practices. Those practices include washing your car on your driveway, adding too much fertilizer to your lawn, or dumping excess oils and chemicals down your storm drain. Lastly, he does water quality testing and sampling, where this provides a scientific, interdisciplinary program for the students to watch to see how basic water tests can be done to show what ends up in our waterways from stormwater.
So lastly, in conclusion, the ultimate goal of our project was to empower students with a scientific mindset. While our project focused on stormwater and stormwater education, we wanted to get students interested in the whole entire STEM or science, technology, engineering, math field, which would further impact communities and the future development of them. We also adapted, made our program easily adaptable to any currently implemented scientific education program or curriculum. We understand that the MS4 permit puts a lot of strain on both the municipalities and the school systems, just due to the fact that you have to adhere to the compliance of the different MS4 control measures. And we hope that our project is able to help both the town of Fitchburg and Fitchburg Public Schools with satisfying this complex permit and also encouraging environmental stewardship and. and the promotion of the better ship of the environment. So, we, lastly, we'd like to thank our sponsors from the City of Fitchburg, DPW, Jeff Morowski and Nick Erickson; from the Fitchburg Public Schools, Jessica Stadalski; and from WPI, our own project advisor, Professor Corey Ganner. And lastly, we would like to open up the floor to any questions.
I'm wondering if we could go back to the very first slide and the six items that you had, and you chose to start with number one, but I'd like to see the larger picture. Are you going to go back one by one, huh?
So, the MS4 permit?
Yeah. Oh, you get the...
There we go.
So, could somebody read those?
So, the first one is "Public Education and Outreach," second is "Public Involvement," third is "Elicit Discharge Detection and Prevention," fourth is "Construction Site Runoff Control," fifth is "Post-Construction Management," and the last is "Good Housekeeping."
So, it's a very big, big topic, huh?
Yeah.
Our project focuses specifically on the first.
On the first part of it.
These are mostly education-related, and these are a lot of permitting and on the city's side.
Right, and then you, you worked with our, our water man here in Fitchburg. So, I, I don't know if I could ask him, how big is this on your table of, of interest? Is Jeff here?
Yes.
Jeff, maybe Jeff is...
Come up to the table.
Come up to the table.
Yep. Put a face on these names.
Our water guys. I like that.
That is classy, just running up Randy.
The shape of water, right here.
I'm Jeff Morowski, I'm the DPW Deputy Commissioner of Wastewater, so I'm the dirty water guy.
And I'm Nick Erickson, I'm a civil engineer with the DPW.
Wastewater's interest in this particular endeavor and project has to do with our consent decree obligations. Back in 2012, we entered into a consent decree with the US EPA and the Mass DEP, and that had to do with past violations the city had for, of the Clean, the Federal Clean Water Act, the Massachusetts Clean Waters Act, and also our NIPD's permit, which regulates how we operate the treatment plant in the sewer system. So, one of our obligations under the consent decree had to do with the implementation of green infrastructure and low-impact development. So, this project is a natural fit into that and is helping us to, to grow that. It's kind of a subject that's not well-taken on yet by the city, and we were trying to develop these partnerships to help, help that program flourish.
So, it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rose.
You, you said that this, this runoff water, so I guess maybe the problem keeps getting worse if we keep having impermeable spaces, right, where that it can't be absorbed in it. But, it, you brought up the subject of separating it out. It, it doesn't get separated out. Could you just explain that to me a little bit?
Do you want to take that one? Sure. So, way back earlier in the century, when the sewer system was built, a lot of the catch basins and other storm water collectors were piped directly into the sewer system. And that went to like a river, or a pond, or a lake, and that would be considered a combined sewer overflow. So, in the 1970s, that became regulated, and cities and towns were forced to separate their storm water system from their sewer system. So, the City of Fitchburg system, being, you know, 100 years old or more, was still combined up until then. And so, slowly, we've been separating those two systems, so that we have an individual sewer system and an individual storm water system. So, we're not quite completely done, but we're, we're getting very close.
So, they will eventually be separated out just naturally through the work you've done? You will have completed?
Yes, the work that we're doing now and will continue to do under consent decree that we have through the EPA.
What percentage is complete already?
I can speak to that. Back when we started sewer separation in the early 2000s, we had about 23 and a half miles, I believe, of combined sewers. After completing three large sewer separation projects, and more recently, one smaller separation project, we're down to about 9.2 miles. So, that's about a 60% reduction in the amount of miles of combined sewers that we have. We still have, I believe, 12 combined sewer overflow regulators, and those are points where, when we have too much rain and the combined sewer can't take all that flow, it's a purge valve that allows the release of the mixture of storm water and sanitary sewage. So, what we're having from these relief points, and the reason these relief points exist is so that we don't have sewage going into people's basements and flowing out into the streets from manhole covers. So, when we have these rain events, we've got discharges of untreated wastewater. So, there's untreated wastewater that's going out into the environment in those situations. So, we are continuing to make advances on sewer separation, and we're making other improvements that will increase the sewer-flowing capacity of the sewer system.
Well, once, once you do complete it all, the rest, the nine plus, you will have completed all of Fitchburg's sewer system? It'll be separate?
That's correct.
So, does, will this, this situation still apply then, or will it just, will what you have done handle it?
Well, this is getting into the realm of green infrastructure as well. And what that really is, is in the, green can mean several different things. In the context of storm water, what it really means is the diversion of storm water away from gray infrastructure. That's catch basins, pipes, manholes, piped systems is considered gray infrastructure. Green infrastructure is promoting the infiltration of storm water into soils or the uptake of storm water by vegetation. So, what that does is it helps to divert storm water away from pipe systems.
So, that may be getting at, I guess, my question. And, so, the curriculum guide is done?
I have drafts.
You have, okay.
I can, I can...
So...
Just drafts.
I was...
They're needing some feedback right now, so I didn't email them to anyone.
I was just curious if you could give us a sample lesson. Is it set up as like lesson plans?
We have some samples of what our workbooks look like. They're at the end.
So, is this something that will be able to be implemented the next school year?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So, the fit for the project, we, you know, we had some challenges with it coming up with MCAS season and this being a seven-week project for WPI students. So, that was one of the major challenges, was how to get this into the classrooms. And according to our curriculum maps, we had, you know, our Year in a Glance planners had this set of standards in fifth grade being taught in September, October. So, this is something that we'll be able to start the year off. And that's the main reason why they piloted some of the activities at Boys and Girls Club, because they were willing participants, and we had students that were able to give feedback, and children that were able to give feedback on the interest and the engagement of the activities and those sorts of things. So, as a basic overview of our Student Workbook, we focused on three main chapters. The first covers the water cycle, and then it also talks about storm water, storm water. And then our third chapter is all about green solutions, which, as Jeff talked about, include green infrastructure. So, the focus of the workbook is all gearing students to become rain wranglers, just like Runoff Randy. So, the educational video describes what a rain wrangler is, is someone who protects the environment from storm water pollution. And then, at the end of each workbook, there's this little badge that students can get, so they can be official rain wranglers. And there's also a pledge about becoming a community scientist. So, our workbook is focused on information that's directly applicable, applicable to the STE framework. And then, at the end, this is a sample of some of the activities.
Yeah, so the first one was, on this diagram of Fitchburg, circle the local watersheds. How do you think municipalities like Fitchburg DPW deal with the problem of rainwater in the city? Another one, actually, one of our favorites that we like to talk about is, when you have classes of students, you divide up the whole class into four groups. One would be like municipal officials, one would be engineers, one would be, what are the others?
Scientists.
Scientists, and one would be like residents. And they would basically mimic what it means to go through a project, an engineering project, and figure out what is the best green solution for their, for example, school. Like, they would go through a rain guard and say, is this applicable to here? And they would see the different dynamics that they would play.
That's great.
I'm going to go ahead and go with her.
So, great job, first of all. This was an awesome presentation and hugely informative. And I really liked that you kind of made the whole curriculum open or just easy to kind of incorporate with, you know, with whatever the teacher's curriculum is currently. So, that was very, you know, very insightful. But I kind of was wondering, why, why storm water? How'd you guys choose that? Like, could you tell me like your majors and what made you choose this project?
So, I'm a mechanical engineer. I'm from Long Island, and we have terrible drainage, because right below, right below dirt, it's all sand. So, I was interested in drainage, and the project was local but not on-campus, and I wanted to do an off-campus IQP, and that's why I chose to work here.
Awesome.
So, I'm civil engineering, so I'm probably the major that's most related or relevant. I interned with a DPW for the past two summers down in Connecticut, which is where I'm from, and we dealt with a lot of MS4 compliance as well. And I really like complying with the permit and making a difference in the community, and I wanted to make an impact here in Fitchburg as well.
Awesome.
I'm also a mechanical engineering. A local airport close to my house, I live in New York, has, for the last 15 years, been leaking a fire-retardant substance that they use on the runways into the local watershed. So, after that, after that wonderful news,
Yeah.
I, I wanted, I was, became interested in how drainage works and how all these different storm water systems work. So, I thought this project was kind of applicable to that.
Yeah.
Probably learn a little more about the, it was negative to test, anyway.
That's good.
So, I'm a lot different than my project partners. I'm not an engineer, I'm a biochemistry major. What really made me interested in this is I'm interested in pursuing a PhD in environmental chemistry. So, I'm really interested in learning all about how problems with water and water quality adversely affect human health and biodiversity. So, it was directly applicable to what I wanted to do in my career.
That's really cool. I was kind of expecting one of you to be like an education major. It's really cool that you guys chose to make a curriculum for fifth graders to, you know, forward environmental progress. It's just really awesome.
And it's been a really positive piece for, for all of us, I think, as co-sponsors of the project. I think the DPW is happy with the outcome so far. We certainly are happy in Fitchburg schools with the resources that they've generated and the lists of contacts that they've created for us. So, with the new frameworks coming in in 2016, a lot of those resources are still really underway and in the works. And this is one that is just so relevant to Fitchburg, too. And they've, everything that we've given to the team, I think, they've delivered on. We asked in the video that they could represent students, so they've worked with the Fitchburg High Envirothon team with Sarah Johnson's students that are part of that. So, it's their first year as an environmental science team in a competition. But they got students that were willing to participate in the video piece, so we'll have a component from them as well. So, our students in Fitchburg will have a connection to the folks that appear in the video, educating them about storm water, and they'll also serve as role models. They'll see some familiar faces in that video.
I just wanted to...
Again, it's a very impressive, great presentation, and the fact that it is geared to, I think it's elementary, middle school. I think it's great to introduce any student to this at that age. And I can also see, just quickly looking through the drafts, how easily this could move on to other environmental types of study that you would have in a, in a curriculum. So, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you, because I think this is exactly the kind of curriculum development that, you know, I think is real for kids. And I think the more that we put students in real-world activities, the better they understand what they could do for a profession, right? And I, hopefully, it leads some of them over to the DPW, right, and maybe shadowing you guys and seeing what you're doing, because...
You have an internship position open this summer.
Okay, good, I'm going to write that down.
By the way.
But I think the more we encourage that, and it's great that you guys are open to that, the better the experience will be for, for our kids. So, thank you, it was great.
I don't think a lot of people realize what Fitchburg has done in having it down to, you know, nine miles. That's quite an accomplishment. As I, Rosemary and I, we go back when they built that first waste treatment plant up in West Fitchburg. And I worked in the chem lab at Crocker Burbank Paper Company. So, if you young people could have seen a Nashua River 50 years ago, I could tell you what, what kind of industrial paper we were making by the color of the river, you know? So, we have made tremendous, tremendous progress. And what's nice is really with the city, the city is, works with the school department, the school department works with the DPW, the wastewater, and Fitchburg really works together and comes together as a community. And I want to thank you, young people, for coming and, and helping us.
Yeah, I have another question. Did you, did you find any, the specific reliance of Fitchburg on gravity for its water flow? Did you find any interesting things about that subject? Because that, you wouldn't find that in a lot of places, I believe.
Because of our hills, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
That wasn't really a part of the projects, the project team's focus. They were focusing more on the educational aspects, so they weren't doing any diagnostic assessments of either the sewer or the storm drainage system.
So, might you answer, does our peculiar system offer a solution, or does it make it more difficult? Or would it be typical of, of other cities that you're aware of?
Well, Fitchburg is very hilly, so the overwhelming majority of our system is gravity flow for that reason. And that lent itself well towards not having to rely on pump stations to move sewage flow and a lot of the topography, and that our principal wastewater treatment facility is over by the Fitchburg Airport. So, the Nashua River topography all goes down from the northwest down to the southeast, which is where our treatment plant is located. So, the way that the system was constructed, it lent itself well to utilizing that topography to its advantage. And combined sewer systems are not all that uncommon, especially in the northeast, which is the oldest-developed part of the country, to be honest. And their development in that methodology was common practice back in that time. And this all preceded the major environmental laws. At that time, when they built systems like this, they were simply trying to move the pollution away from the population. And usually, that meant it, dumping it down into a river and letting the river take the pollution away.
And just for the WPI students and their professor, and perhaps you folks, we don't have a problem until the water hits the ground, is that right? The water's fine till it...
Water's fine.
Context.
Once it's absorbed, if it's absorbed into the ground. But once it hits impervious surfaces, then water quality goes down dramatically.
Yeah, because it carries all of the chemicals.
Right, so if we could catch the water before it got to the problem?
Well, rooftops are generally clean, more so than roadways. Roadways will have sand, sand and salt for snow in traction. Rooftops are generally pretty clean. So, one of the methodologies of protecting the environment is capturing roof water, because it can be repurposed and utilized. And that's something that we're pursuing right now to partner with other departments, once again, and some of the more environmentally active organizations in and around the city. We're going to be pursuing a rain barrel program, and that'll be one of the things we're trying to accomplish is diverting rainwater from a clean source such as a rooftop and reusing it. And that'll save customers money, too, who like to have gardens or flower beds, and they don't have to pay for that water that's falling from the sky.
Thank you.
If I, go ahead. I just want to say thank you to this wonderful group of young people and their, their guardian. Because when we first met with Jeff and the students, this is a highly technical piece of science. And we talked, I mean, I have to say, I was a little nervous, because when we were talking, they were talking about the manuals and guides in the field that are hundreds of pages thick and full of MS4 words and numbers. And when we talked about how to make this accessible to students and teachers, second-language students, students with disabilities, and the teachers who have to, and are committed to teaching them every day, I'm really very thankful and impressed that somehow they figured out how to accomplish a very highly technical science project in terms that our teachers and students can access. So, I'm very grateful and very...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, just ditto on all of that. So, thank, thank you, and especially from the city to work with our students. Every time we'd have these collaborations, everybody benefits from it. And I have hope in the future of the EPA.
Yeah.
Because right now, I don't. You renewed my hope. All right, thanks very much. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move from storm water to robotics. I think they're ready for us, out in the lobby.
What's the next entertainment?
Enrollment, I know. Eva's like, yeah, make me follow, you know, these exciting, fun things.
Welcome to school committee tonight, Mr. Boschman. Nice to have city councillor here. Hi. Okay.
No, just, we need Jean.
Get back and...
Yeah, that's what I was saying, do you go to college right now?
Yeah, I'd have to see you.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't quite sure. That's cool.
Okay, I guess we're on to structured learning time and makeup?
Yes, so as I mentioned to you in the past, we had a number of makeup days that were individual school makeup days as opposed to the whole district. We had Crocker, Rhinegold, no, um...
Long Joe.
Crocker, Long Joe, McKay, and McKay, sorry. And so the difference that happens is when you have one school that goes out, it kind of throws the system off because you would have to just do a makeup for that particular school. So we've been looking at this and working with this. I've been working with the administration of the schools. We've worked with the teachers' association and what we decided to do was to address the issue using, for the term that's been used, is blizzard bags. And that basically is the staff create a curriculum project for that particular day, the students do it at home, and there's communication between students and staff. We had a number of different kinds of approaches, but I brought all the principals together with a group of some teachers and the leadership of the union, and we agreed on a particular approach that would meet the needs of learning time. So I'm just giving you this as an example. It's one example, but it can be a variety of examples, and this is what was used by Long Joe. In the past, for these kinds of days, there needed, you needed to get approval from the state. And now it's simply, I just need to bring it to you. It's not even a vote or anything like that. I just need to inform you that this is what we're doing. So for the three different schools, what they have done is develop their own projects and curriculum pieces for that day, implementing it so that the time that the teacher spends preparing, the time that the students spend doing the work is all verified. So some of these have already taken place, and that I think Long Joe has actually completed theirs now, and then the rest will be completed before the end of the year. All that does is bring them up to the same kind of time as all the other schools. And then we had, as a district, we have seven snow days, and that brings us to Thursday, June 21st is the final day for school as of today. So this is just more to, we've talked about this in the past. I have a lot more information if anyone is interested in more information. We're going to be reviewing whether or not we want to formalize this. If we want to formalize it for next year, we'll be putting together a group of people to look at all the different aspects of it, make proposals, and kind of create something that's kind of a template that every school could use. But it would only really be used when you have one school that's out of kilter from all of the other schools. So I don't know if you have any questions?
We would be interested in using this, if we go over the five days, just a district-wide blizzard bag day?
You can, but there are restrictions within the law in terms of how many days you can do that. You, these, this is preferred for, you know, extenuating circumstances.
Right.
Because the bottom line is, no matter how well you do this, it will never replace the teacher in front of the classroom and the students being in the classroom. But those, those will be all part of the conversation as we look at it for formalizing it for next year.
You have to, you have to get in your 180 days before June 30th.
Yeah. And then, like now, after, is it after June 1st?
After, yeah, I think it's April 1st.
We don't make them up at all. No, no, but after June 1st, you don't have to make them up, I don't think.
Right.
So you wouldn't.
Right.
You have to go 180 days.
Yeah.
Well, but if you, if you're for some reason...
You go after June 1st, right?
As a result of a weather incident or something like that, after...
I think it's June 1st.
I might be mad. I don't know, but then you don't have to make those days up. But for the ones in the winter, yes.
But either way, we're still looking at this, I mean, we're talking about these two days for this year.
Yeah, this is, this has already partly been implemented and will be implemented at the other schools to catch everyone up, but it's only for the days that went beyond the seven.
Yes.
We're still making up seven.
Jim?
When, when, when these are handed out, how long do the students have to complete? Is it like turned the next day when there's...
In most cases, the next day.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Did you have any other...
Yeah, I did. So we're going to be doing this over like a weekend, over a Saturday, the students go home and have like a supervised four hour to six hour period?
Well, ideally, it's on the, now, when we're catching up, because we didn't have this in place, but ideally, if you have it all in place, it's done on the day that everyone is actually away.
Right.
That everybody is out. If not, then it has to be done on another day of the week. Like it could be done during a school vacation, it could be done on a weekend, it could be done a number of times.
Right, so these two days are from January, so we're not going to be doing this because it's, so what I'm saying is this is going to be on a Saturday when we don't have planned school, that the kids are just going to be going home and having a supervised blizzard bag day?
Long Joe already did theirs, and I don't have right now which days they did it on.
Okay.
So I'm, I don't, I'm not sure.
And they, and that proposal got accepted?
Yeah.
Considered a school day, okay?
Yeah. Because what's different now, what's different is, last year, that had to be a proposal that went to the state, and it had to get the imprimatur of the state. Now, they've changed that, and it's up to the district to design it, and all I have to do is inform the school committee. That's the big change.
Okay.
Question?
I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
No, I'm all set, that's okay.
Okay. I have a lot more information on it and like charts and stuff that we've put together. What's that, the law? Yeah. If you want to look that up. I can, we can give you some specifics about the Mass General Law. And we also built off of, I think it was, what was the name, is it not Tootsbury? I wrote to a couple of different superintendents who've been implementing this. Burlington has been doing it, Woburn has been doing it, so we got some samples of what they did and how they did it and all, and that's kind of like what we built our model on.
Because I know a big part of this with other school districts that have been doing it is the supervision is the big part. When the state had to approve of the proposal, the big oversight that they had was, what kind of oversight was the actual teacher or parent going to be in place with this? Because then it's just, you just give the kid six hours of homework, and that's supposed to be the equivalent of a school day. So I guess, you know, what kind of, with the different circumstances that all of our students in, how did we have one universal oversight for this six hour period? I mean, if it was over computer, and the teacher could look at what their progress is, you know, if there's a first and if there's two students with one computer in the house, then that's, you know, something that's...
Yeah, and you have to, we have to accommodate for all of that in, in talking, because you can't have some people say, well, I have no access to a computer, so I couldn't do this. So, and then there's material that comes back, did you have some things?
Yeah, it's actually April 1st. Any days lost after April 1st because of severe weather do not have to be made up, so long as you've scheduled the five additional, you have to schedule in your calendar. So, and these are called alternative structured learning days, but absolutely, there have to be provisions for accommodating students who might not have the use of technology. We use, in our school district, we use Google Classroom as a major platform for online learning, but for students who don't have computers at home, they may then have to make provisions at the library. So, and I think it was last year, I don't know this year, I was going to email Craig, the students had a week to complete the work assignments outside of school time. Does it substitute for teaching?
Right.
It's a different issue.
Well, because what, what, what happens is, in some ways, if it's done correctly and, and, you know, has high expectations for the work, what would happen before is you'd schedule something, you'd schedule extra days for those schools on Saturday or during school vacation, and your attendance rate would be 40%.
Is that why we didn't, is that why we opted out of choosing like a half day for Saturdays? Because the attendance rate was good?
That's part of the reason why, and the other reason was that we already had so many days and, and, you know, because we would have had eight. We've lot, you know, but now we're down to seven. And remember, we took the half day on Good Friday, and the minute you start doing that, people have plans, teachers are away, and it becomes, so we had a long conversation about it and involved talking to teachers and all, and the principals really felt that, I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure I think it's a good idea to use it as a major practice.
Yeah, I always kind of tend to agree.
Yeah, I, I'm really not, and that's why we're going to have a lot more conversation about it. It's one thing if a school gets closed because there was a boiler issue or something, and you're making, because to try to figure out how to make that up, I can tell you, is really complicated.
Jeanne?
I think, we had mentioned bringing this up in the next student support meeting. It had been on the agenda, but the meeting went long, so I think it would be good to bring it back to student support, just to get feedback from Craig about how it went for them.
Yes.
Give some, maybe some pointers about how to go forward, but I agree, I don't think, I don't think you do this because you, you want to do it. You do this because you're in some rare, odd kind of situation.
And there are districts who are doing this as makeup days for the whole school district.
Yeah, see, I don't think that's a good direction.
I personally don't think you want to go down that road. First of all, not that we're different, but a lot of our students don't have the kind of opportunity for support and follow-up and everything else at home, and I think you really need that. So I think as the district looks at it, we should look at it as an exceptional opportunity for a makeup that's not ideal by any means, but really helps to keep us moving.
We're not looking at it as the whole school district.
Right.
We're looking at those one or two schools that miss a day and make up for those one or two schools, not if the whole school system is out, we'll just go an extra day.
I will have Craig come, because he does a really good job.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, he did it last year where we got permission from the state to do it, and then he's done it this year. He would be a good person to give you the kind of feedback on, you know, the ups and downs of it.
And you said there's, there's a limit of how many times you can do this in a school year, is that according to state?
No, there actually isn't.
There isn't?
No, there isn't, and...
If you had eight snow days, technically, you could do this a few times.
Right, right.
You could just do blizzard bags.
Right.
Okay, wow. Yeah, that's not something, yeah, that's something I think we would do.
That's not a, that's not a path I'm interested in going down.
No, it's individual schools that miss a day, not unlike taught by...
We won't have that happen anymore, but if it should happen, we'll be ready for it.
You also said you don't need us, right?
Right, this isn't a...
So we don't really have...
Well, that's, but the student support committee is the place, because it hasn't, it doesn't have a policy piece to it, it doesn't have a legal piece to it, but it has a student piece to it. You know, our, our students, you know, if I came to you and said, you know what, from now on, we're not making up days, we're just going to send home blizzard bags, well, student support would be looking at that and saying, how is that meeting our goals of high level education and all that kind of stuff?
I actually, as you were speaking, I could see how it could be utilized very nicely with a specific task that a teacher would have in case we have a blizzard day. This is supportive of the work that we're doing in the classroom, and, you know, a task, it could, it could fit in very nicely.
Well, and technology can play, I mean, there's Khan Academy, there's a whole list of places where you can go and get some really good lessons, but if you don't have access to a computer or you don't have somebody, it's another story, so. It'll come to student support.
All right. School assignments.
Okay. Eva Kelly has been waiting patiently. She has already come, this is her third time presenting this. She presented it to cabinet about two months ago now, Eva?
Yeah.
About two months ago, then she came to student support and presented it to student support, and now she's going to, she's bringing it to you. And it's coming to school committee because it has a number of implications in terms of this, the way enrollment is done, the way school assignment is done, and things like that. So take it away, Eva.
Good evening, everyone. So, as Andre said, just thinking about making some changes to the school assignment procedure, and I did visit the subcommittee and presented the same materials. Also, I forwarded you all the slides, I believe, so if you have any questions, just let me know as we go through. So, in thinking about the way we assign students, coming up on our kindergarten enrollment month, which we're in the middle of right now, and looking at fourth to fifth grade assignments, we were just taking a look at the procedures and seeing what might be able, what we might be able to streamline and make more efficient. It's a really great time to do this in our district because all of our ELA and math curriculum from elementary all the way through middle is standardized throughout the district, so everybody's learning the same material at the same pace, using the same curriculum guides. All the schools have ELA and math coaches to provide job embedded support to the teachers in rolling out this curriculum. And this fall, all the elementary and middle schools will have had the principals in place for at least three years. So we're looking at a really great time to make some shifts. Also, our data indicates that the socioeconomic and cultural demographics of our city are consistent across elementary and middle schools at this time. So the shift is that we would base assignments primarily on student address. It's going to make the process more efficient and transparent for everybody and strengthen the idea of having a neighborhood school, strengthening the communities around those schools and, and our neighborhoods. So some of the neighborhoods will be shared, which I'm going to show you those areas in a little bit. And just to keep in mind, we're not disrupting a majority of the students enrolled and attending school right now. It's really focused on immediately the kindergartners that are enrolling for the fall and the middle school students transitioning from fourth grade into fifth grade. Also, it would affect any new or returning students that come in after June 30th. Do you guys have any questions so far? So, for the incoming kindergarten students, they're going to be assigned again based on their home address. However, we, as with anything when we're dealing with human beings, we have some exceptions. So any families who have students currently enrolled and attending elementary school right now, K through three, and will be there next year, living at the same address, will be able to enroll their kindergartner in the same school. So kind of making that a little bit easier for the families. Same thing's going to apply to the middle school students enrolling in fifth grade. If they have a sibling that is currently in one of our middle schools, currently now fifth, sixth, seventh grader, and they have a younger sibling coming into fifth grade next year, they'll be able to attend that same middle school. We have a couple of exceptions at McKay Academy. So as you know, we had a lot, a large influx of students that were displaced from Puerto Rico this year, and some of the students had to be sent to McKay either because they were living in that area, trying to keep the families together. However, many of the students, some of the students that were assigned there have siblings at different middle schools. So we're looking at potentially moving approximately 17 kids that have been enrolled at McKay this year to different middle schools that are entering middle school next year.
Yeah, just one question. Is that because the siblings are in a school closer to their home?
They're in...
Rather than McKay being closer to their home?
Right, they, okay, so we have that large influx, and primarily when we begin the year, we're looking at numbers of classrooms. So when classroom numbers start to rise, if we can get some students to McKay, if they're close to that area, they might be assigned there, just because our classroom sizes might be bridging at the other elementary schools. So the thing is, this past year, for middle school, we only had a newcomer ELL program here at Memorial. So a lot of the middle, most of the middle schoolers, if they needed that newcomer ELL program, they came here, but their siblings might be at McKay. Now, if those siblings are entering middle school, it would make more sense to bring them to Memorial with their older sibling, right? So we have about 11 students at McKay that we'd like to move to Long Joe. Three already have siblings at Long Joe. And we have six students at McKay that I'd like to move to Memorial, and three of them have siblings at Memorial already. So we're really talking about 10 kids when it comes down to it that would be displaced.
Does it affect any of those students who school choiced into McKay because it was the Arts Academy?
So, school choice from outside the district...
No, 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 from, from in the district, and they, because it was the Arts Academy, and they were going there, school choice in because they were...
No, that was part of that, it was part of that influx of all of these students coming in from Puerto Rico. And it's because it's in the middle of the year, it was around January, enrollment or before that, maybe December...
Yeah, November, December.
November, December. So they're looking at, okay, what's the class size here? What's the class size there? And you don't want to put all those kids in one classroom and make class size 33 kids in one particular school. So the immediate solution was, because we have to get them into school within 24 hours of their, of their arriving. So the immediate solution was, get them into classrooms as soon as possible, put them in the classrooms that are not the largest classrooms, because again, you've got people coming sometimes with ELL issues, they're definitely coming from a traumatic experience, so you're trying to do that. Now, but some of those had siblings in other schools. So now what Eva's trying to do is, as we move into the next assignment, now disperse them in the schools where they would be with their siblings, that from a family point of view, that would be a good thing, it would be the ideal.
Okay, we're trying to get students into their neighborhood school. How, will it be any effect on our contract with Fitchburg State and the number of students that we send there?
No. No, we have a very set number now, it's three, three sections, 75 students per grade. So that also dictates how much flexibility Eva has with McKay, because it's, it's three sections of roughly, we try to keep it at 25 per section, so that's 75, maybe we can go up to 78 or so, but there's not a lot of wiggle room, because it's also an innovation school and has, you know, that component to it.
Yeah, and as I go forward and show you the shared areas, that's going to help us to defer overcrowding at any of the schools. So Crocker, I'm going to just talk about kind of the neighborhoods that would be at each of the schools. So McKay-Crocker would have some shared areas just because of where they fall in the city. So Crocker is predominantly the area east of Caldwell, north of Sheldon and Main Street to Charles, across Francis Cliff and down to Albee, and including Wenuesnok and Battles Ave down to the Lemonster Line. So if you kind of have a vision of that in your head, the way it would flow kind of diagonally across the city. McKay is predominantly around the College and the juncture at Lincoln and North Street, around Pearl and Blossom, and down to Upper Main Street in summer. So if you're envisioning that in your head, you can see where it would be a shared area between the two. So if McKay is completely full, even though someone's around the College, we can always get them to Crocker, okay? Does that make sense?
So Crocker becomes the overflow for McKay.
For McKay, yeah.
That's what I was concerned with.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Rhinegold, and, you know, this isn't guesswork for you, predominantly the area of West Fitchburg, all the way over to South to include Wenuesnok, which is part of the shared area, and South is predominantly west of it, including South Street to include Wenuesnok already. So again, you can see where that would be a shared area between South and Rhinegold, where there's some overflow between the two. Okay, overlap, I guess.
And, and part of what happens there is, students don't come to us in neat packages of so many fifth graders or so many eighth graders, or this street has just a number of students. People move in and it's, the numbers are the numbers, the grades are the grades. So you're constantly looking at, where do we place them, how does it work? So the system that Eva has come up with is as close to a neighborhood system as you can, knowing that there had to be places where it overlaps, because you may have to shift people to one school or another if all of a sudden there are more seventh graders than the school can handle.
Jim?
Yeah.
So, so when you do these districts or areas...
So when you do these districts or areas, do you have any kind of numbers that indicate how many children live?
Yes, yes. So I worked through a process with Donna Hildreth, which is a transportation coordinator. We have a TransFinder program we use. And then we also downloaded from our X2 system, assigned every student and balanced the numbers as best we could. It was tremendous amount of work, but I think I really have good solid numbers.
One more question.
Yeah?
I didn't, so you, you mentioned West Fitchburg. You didn't mention specifically Claygon. Claygon falls into...
So Claygon...
West Fitchburg, Rhine Gold area.
Yeah, that would be Rhine Gold area.
Rhine Gold, Memorial.
And then that, it's, and when I talk about the shared areas, you'll see it's kind of at the base of that. So let me just, let me keep going, Rosemary. So Memorial is the area west of Sheldon Street and Caldwell, south of Charles to Water and down to Wenuesknock. So that kind of takes in some of the South Street area and all of Rhine Gold. Okay?
Eva, on ours, it says east of Sheldon.
Did I say it wrong?
No, you, you have west up there, but it says east on here.
Yeah, I think it's east. No, it's west. I'm sorry. Can you, I'm sorry. I was going back and forth at home this weekend, and I'm like, oh God, this morning I switched it back on the presentation. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's west, right? It's west, north, yeah. And Long Joe is the area including Wenuesknock, so that's again, part of the shared section. South to the Lemonster Line, east of Water Street to Lunenburg, but also including Albee, north to Charles Street and up Sheldon and Caldwell. So Sheldon and Caldwell is really the divider on that side of the city. Does that make sense? Let me show you the shared areas. It might help. So then there are two loops. There's a loop where South Street and Charles meet that runs down South Street to Wenuesknock across to Water. So if you can think of that in your head, how that looks, it's like a loop down to the Lemonster Line, including Airport Road and Duckmill Pond Road, and up to Water Street to Laurel. Okay? So that area, again, it can be assigned to either of the middle schools if you're living in that area. And that, again, as Andre said, it will help us when the schools, the numbers get a little bit too high at Memorial, we'll be able to send some of those kids over to Long Joe or vice versa.
And we've been doing some of that anyway. So that, that we've been doing, but it's been more, over the years, it's become more haphazard. Maybe that's an extreme, but it, you know, it's been an adjustment. And we've adjusted here, we've adjusted there. And then over the years, what you find out is you've made so many adjustments that the areas, the neighborhood areas are not as crisp as they can be. And then we were also under, what's the name for it?
Well, a voluntary desegregation order for many years.
Right, a voluntary desegregation order, which said to us, we had to look at all these factors in terms of balancing the population at every school. What has happened over the years is as the demographic of Fitchburg has changed and people have moved and come and gone, we pretty much can assign anyone to any school and we meet the demographic requirements. So some of the, the shifts that we were making in order to make that happen, we actually don't have to make them anymore. And I don't know whether you're going to talk about that a little bit, but that was having a big implication on our busing.
I was, I was going to ask that.
Because we had some outliers that were decisions that were made 10 years ago, and we were busing people almost across the whole town because of that. And, and we still are. But it's going to take a while, but the goal of this is that, that that would be less and less and less as we go more towards a neighborhood school approach.
If, I would think this fall, if you could, as you do your work, we get a racial breakdown.
Absolutely. I have one that, a current racial breakdown for you, I believe.
Because what Andre's talking about, we went, went through that.
We, we file every, the October 1st data, the March 1st data, the end of the year data, and we can pull all of that in through our SIMS database in a pivot table and compare. I mean, it's racial, it's language minority, it's students in ELL programs, students with special needs, economically disadvantaged.
I would just like to see that from next year versus this year's and what the change...
Oh, okay. So in the fall, in the fall, you'd like to do that, okay.
Eva, I don't know if this is coming up at the end. I know it didn't come up in student support, but I mean, while ELA and other curriculum is consistent, time is not consistent, right? So there are people, I remember I had a friend who said she wouldn't send her kid to Memorial, even though she lived right next to Memorial, because there's no way she could have somebody getting out at 1:30 in the afternoon, back when Memorial got out at 1:30 in the afternoon. And so it's just, that's, that's not consistent between the schools. Levels aren't consistent between the schools of accountability status, right? So these are some of the things that I would anticipate are going to be big problems for people in the district.
If I could, Memorial now has a 21st Century After School program that runs until 5:00. So that early dismissal is mitigated.
But that's grant-based and we don't...
That could get taken away.
So I just, I don't know if we're going to be talking about things like that, but I, I think that that is one of the biggest reasons that people took advantage of. I never personally understood why we had that system, like, oh, let me tell you where I'd like to go.
It's three-tier busing. It's three-tier busing. You could not have that system and have all the schools start at the same time and end at the same time, but you'd have to triple the number of buses.
No, I'm saying, I, I never understood why we had the system of where would you like your child to go to school?
Oh, now you know.
It was part of a voluntary desegregation.
It was part of a federal mandate that we were under.
This goes back when migrant circles, so this goes back 20, 25 years. Fitchburg schools had too many of certain demographic cohorts in some schools and not enough in another. Schools, there were schools that had very high poverty rates, schools that had very low poverty rates. The students who were in the Spanish or among bilingual classes were located at certain schools and not others. And there was a complaint filed and Fitchburg was told it had to desegregate its schools.
We were under what was called controlled choice.
Controlled choice.
Yeah.
And it's worked. And it was, and you know, it was, it was effective, but it created a very complex system of student placement. And they, and you couldn't go to that system, Jean, you could not go to that system unless you allowed for in district choice. That was because you had to give that option. So we would send out those forms, first and second and third choice, and really encourage everyone to think that they had first, second, and third choice. But then we'd look at the numbers and you'd say, wow, this school has a seventh grade class size of 32. And you had 100 other people that wanted to go there. So you were balancing, you know, you were saying, can't do that, guys, because that would be unbearable. So every year, and you were doing it when I came 13 years ago.
I was the Roman op.
You spent a month in the summer trying to ameliorate all of those choices and tell people that it was a choice, but it really wasn't a choice. So that's why Eva has spent a lot of time on this, going, you know what? This is an opportunity to start correcting that. And yet, as you see, everyone is grandfathered. So nobody's going and ripping people out of the schools they've been in, but new kindergartners coming in are going to be under this system, new people moving in. And then you get this whole new mill complex. So, so, she's going to talk about that, but you're, you've got this all set, and then they open up a whole new mill complex with all these apartments, and before you know it, you've got a lot of kids over there. And you've got to figure out where to put them.
And I, and I appreciate your concerns, but this is really the most equitable way to do this. If we're talking about equity for everybody in the city, every parent, every student, this is an equitable way to do it. This is an example of what the loop I just described to you that you could share between Long Joe and Memorial. And the second loop, which Andre just alluded to with the mill complexes, is a point where Main and River Street meet in a loop to enclose, include West Street, Sienna to Almont, where it meets Wallace Road. So this loop includes 245 River, which is Riverside Commons, as well as the yarn works. And currently, we have at these two complexes, we have 76 students coming out of those two complexes right now. So it's a good place to make, to create the loop.
There's a new building, there's a new building going in.
And more going up. Right, right, right. So...
Now, this is all good news, because this has increased enrollment and all of that stuff. So that's not bad stuff. It's good stuff.
Yes.
But it creates complex issues that you have to deal with.
Again, this would kind of create some feeders, a feeder school system. So the four fourth grade classrooms from Crocker would be assigned to Long Joe with three from South Street, and one more, two more from South Street going to Memorial, and the five from Rhine Gold. So then we have a balance, again, at Long Joe and Memorial, and the students at McKay would continue up through eighth grade at McKay.
Because they're pre-K8.
Yeah. So they, that's why they're not on this graphic. We, we looked at the big childcare centers. The students still would be assigned by their home address because we really have access to all the large childcare centers from any of the elementary schools, the Y, 123 Grove, Kid Stop, and the Boys and Girls Club. Again, this would increase the use of safe routes to school that I know the city has been working on for years. And it would increase, I believe, parent involvement in their schools, because they know where their child's going to elementary and where they're going to go to middle. So they're going to become more involved, they're going to have more access to the school, to programs there, if they're in a, their neighborhood, and also opportunities for the students if they're after school.
Eva, today, going by South Street School, I saw parents and students using the sidewalk on the right-hand side, heading towards where there never was before. The crossing guard is crossing them, and they're walking down to the traffic light and the, and sidewalks up Electric Avenue. So those people who complain.
Isn't that what we want to see? We want to see children comfortable walking, walking in our neighborhoods, right?
And they were walking, you know, and...
They're safe to be doing that.
Which they never were before, because there was no sidewalk.
Yeah. It's going to also help the school system in the sense that it would provide a clear vertical alignment, which elementary schools, where they're going to middle, enable teachers to be working together, the receiving schools working with those teachers that, with the teachers from the elementaries that really know the students. It's going to be able to ensure that these students are starting their fifth grade year with the resources they need, because they're going to be able to communicate with those teachers around that. It's going to also allow students to remain with their classmates while accommodating, again, our school capacities. And I just broke down the classrooms that I just talked about for the feeder kind of system. So again, strengthening our neighborhoods, increase parent access to school programs, and that's it. Yep?
I do think our biggest contention here is the extended day at Long Joe. And I guess, one question I have about the extended day at Long Joe is, what is that lifespan? Like what, I mean, that's a state-supported initiative.
It, so it has diminishing lifespan.
Yeah.
Because every year since we began the grant, the grant has been cut. Where actually, a lot of districts have ended up, they're not in it anymore. We have one of the model programs. Craig and his staff are asked many times to present on the work that they do there. But every year, our costs go up and the amount of the grant goes down. So there were things that we used to be able to offer in that extended day that now have been moved into the salary component, you know, of that school.
Right.
So it, the gigantic benefit, over three years, the student at that school have gone to school for four years. They have four years of education. It adds a whole year of education to the student body.
And I have to say, I think that that, when we talk about the schools all being consistent, they, they aren't, right? So like, I think for parents who are looking for that extended day, or, or vice versa, really think that their child would not do well at all in that extended day. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Like, are we open to hearing that? Are we, I, I just, I know what I hear from people, and that's exactly what people would be concerned about. It would be the time, like, this child works.
We have that now. I mean, that all exists now. Because unless you developed an individual education plan for every family, you're going to have that. Because schools aren't the same, they're not in the same location, they're not built the same, the staff is different, you know? And, you know, and the beauty, I think, of the district has been that we've gone after things that are innovative. You know, we have an innovation school, we have an extended day program. You know, we have different kinds of things like that to offer opportunities, you know, to staff and to students. And at the time, you know, there's a, Long Joe was not a level two school. Long Joe was a level three school. And it became a level two school, and I think it did, because it added a year of, of...
They have the, the best scores in the city for the eighth grade performance.
Right, you know, of education. But the reality is, this is a complex process, educating 5,200 kids across a city this size, and then being conscious of transportation costs, you know, all of those kinds of things. I mean, we've cut every year, for a number of years, we were cutting one or two buses from the budget. And we weren't doing it because it was a good idea, we were doing it because we had a big deficit, and we either cut, we either cut a bus or two teachers. So I think, you know, I don't know where the extended day program is going to go. I'm not sure how long the state's going to be able to continue, you know, that kind of funding.
But if, if I could, one of the things we look at in terms of that, the legacy cross-district transportation, busing is up to about $87,000 a bus. So by scaling back on that legacy transportation, that's more than the cost of a teacher. If we can get to a year from now, or two years from now, those, and when Andre says there are some incredible outliers, it's almost like every, every one of our neighborhood districts has a paisley to it, a flange, because there are students from out by Lanny Orchards coming all the way across town to one of the schools on this side of the river. We have a bus with, what is it, six, eight?
Six kids, yeah.
Six kids, $87,000. I mean, we, we have to present an alternative based on things that make sense. I mean, we have good, solid curriculum everywhere. You saw what we do in science. Good, solid programs, good professional development, coherence in our leadership. Times are different, but we deal with that now with parent issues and daycare. But to be responsible about providing the best programs we have with the resources that we have, we have to look, six kids, $87,000.
You pay $87,000, and if we don't provide that, it's economics, even if, if they say we can't provide that anymore, we're going to school choice out. Well, school choicing out is only going to cost us $30,000.
Yeah, I have to say, I have to say, I stopped hearing that three or four years ago.
We have really good programs.
It's been, it's been four years since I've heard someone say, give me what I want or I'm school choicing out. And that was a common theme. I heard that all the time in the summer. But as, you know, the example you gave, if you have a school that gets out at 1:30 and one that gets out at 4:00, and it's left up to everybody to decide where they're going to be, I'd have to provide taxi cab service in the district and not busing. So when you've got 5,200 kids spread out all over gigantic geography, you have to come up with systems that help you do that as efficiently as you can.
So, I don't know if, Jean, do you have another question to follow that up?
I do.
Let's stay on the subject, because I was going to kind of switch, switch gears a little bit, so follow up.
Partly, I guess, understanding that you have to account for buses, would it be a goal that we would get more in line with a standard time of school?
Can't do it.
Well, understanding that you have to stagger for buses, but not so wildly different than what we have right now.
Believe me, we, you cannot do it. We're on three-tier busing. You have to have time for the buses to get to the first school, for everybody to get on the bus, for the bus to deliver all of those students, and then to go to the next year. For everybody to get on the bus, for the bus to deliver those students, for the buses to then get back to the third tier of schools. And I mean, we look at this stuff every day, every day. We have a busing transportation person with Transponder, which is a system that analyzes every street to the point to give you the best possible system, which is why, over the years, we've been able to cut buses. Because every year... Because every year, we look at it and go, "All right, which two buses, which two things could we combine to save the cost of a bus?" And we literally have cut buses to pay for a teacher's salary. Had we not done that, we would've cut a teacher. So, it's, unless we got a huge infusion of money and we're able, because, and I go through this with, when we do a half-day, right? So, and a lot, and probably in Maynard, right? They do a two-hour early release. Everybody goes to school at the same time, everybody goes home at the same time. When I have a storm coming, I can look at my first tier and go, "Oh, no problem, all the kids will be home by 1 o'clock." But then, I look at the second tier and I go, "Oh, those aren't gonna get home till 2:30." And then, I look at the third tier and go, "Those kids aren't getting home till it's dark and it's 4:30, and the storm will be in place for two hours." So, I have a totally different kind of decision-making than the superintendent in Maynard, who knows that when they all dismiss, they're all gonna be home and having hot cocoa at 11 o'clock.
So, my question was more of what we were talking about earlier, about just the socioeconomic and cultural data that you kinda looked at. And moving forward, I mean, poverty is usually in pockets. And if we're gonna make this neighborhood school, neighborhood schools, I would be concerned with the families that are moving into Fitchburg. Did we look at their socioeconomic status and neighborhoods that they're kinda congregating towards? Is there a part of town that lower-class families are typically moving towards, and there's, you know, a different, you know, upper-class moving to a different part of town? And over time, as that kind of grows and those neighborhoods grow in those respects, isn't that gonna cause the exact problem that we're trying to stay away from?
So, when we look at that data, what we do is we pull it all out of X2, because we track all of that in our X2 system.
X2, okay.
A student information system.
So, honestly, and I don't have the graph with me, but we brought it when we went to Boston to talk about petitioning for the money.
The MSBA.
For the MSBA. And, right now, all of our schools are 48, 52, 49, or 51. Like, they're all equal poverty-wise, district-wide, our poverty seems pretty consistent across this district. I don't know if you can speak to that more, Paula?
Actually, all of our federal grants require us to prioritize our schools by socioeconomic criteria. And our two elementary schools that annually indicate the highest poverty levels are South Street and Crocker. Those are the two. So, the, between South Street and Rhengold, a shared district, that loop area allows us to manage the enrollments based on the criteria. McKay and Crocker, they have a shared enrollment area, allows us to manage the enrollment and assignments through those shared areas. The middle schools are in Memorial and Long Joe and McKay in terms of middle school, there is a difference. Long Joe has a higher poverty level, because that whole north of Maine, where there's significant community reinvestment. And again, it's because it's the feeder school to Crocker. But, there's a common loop, shared area for the two middle schools. And those are strategically selected, happens to be the big complex on River Street, where we know there's a high mobility level in a lot of families. And right now, we have students assigned to both middle schools from those common loops. So, I think allowing for that, that shared area, and those, they're pretty extensive loops, give, will give us enough capacity to manage flow. I mean, I sound critical, technical, I don't know what the word is, but, because they're families, and you wanna give them the right place for their children. But, we did, Eva took a look at all the demographic data and the neighborhood maps. I mean, this is about the fourth iteration of the neighborhood maps we've looked at.
And the way we drew the lines, it would be easier, it'd easier shift them.
Two or three streets over.
Maybe two streets this way or that, to balance that out.
Yeah, yeah.
And two questions, does this, will you do?
Is that, I'm sorry.
No, that was perfect, that's what I wanted to know. That's great.
Does this save buses? Have you cut out any buses during this?
Not this year, because we're not relocating students currently in a place. But by doing this and advertising it, and then starting with the kindergarten, as the older students matriculate on, that bus will be scaled back.
Nice. And does this affect the teachers? Will teachers be changing schools, no?
So, have we looked at how the costs are gonna change with this interim? Well, you know, if we're gonna have some students, you know, go to schools with their siblings or not, have we kinda looked at how that's really gonna affect this bus budget over the next, until it's all grandfathered to be updated?
Well, first of all, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Right.
So, it's gonna take, and...
Five years.
And that, right, exactly. Because we're grandfathering everybody, and we're just tweaking it as we change it, with the goal that when you're facing budget issues or whatever in the future, you will have the most efficient transportation system, you will have squeezed out whatever you can from transportation already.
So, our efficiency is gonna be short-term and long-term, right?
Right.
By the way, we're gonna get, you know, more effectiveness in how we distribute the buses, and any kind of complications that come up with putting students with their siblings won't contradict that progress.
Right. And, as Paula said, we capture these data in X2 all the time. So, and Eva is the full-time enrollment director and the community liaison, so this is her job. She's constantly looking at this. And if there looks like something is, and some of the stuff we don't have control over, and that is the new housing pieces. So, all of a sudden, some project starts and is built, and now you've got 40. So, those overlaps, where the two circles overlap, that's the, that's the leeway that allows you to do some moving back and forth. But right now, you've got somebody up here driving, busing totally across town to get to a school that was assigned 10 years ago.
Those things are gonna be gone.
So, Eva, first of all, I know this is a tremendous amount of work, and I know you've had to present this a lot, so, thank you for that. And I guess this is a question for anybody about, what about very specific programs at certain schools that service very particular populations?
Sure. So, special education, you talked about...
Yeah, emotionally, yeah. I think ELL, emotional issues.
So, right now, all of our elementary schools service ELL, all levels. And I believe there's a plan to provide a newcomer...
All right, so, let me, we just talked about it today. So, as you know, we just got additional funding from the state for the influx of students from Puerto Rico. So, three weeks ago, I asked Bonnie Beer, who's our ELL director, to give, to look at all the demographics across the city, to look at this, and to give me the proposal of where do we need that addition, those additional staff members to meet those needs? How is that gonna be? So, she presented it this morning at Cabinet, two different scenarios based on, you know, how we wanted to spread that out. So, a component of this, if we implement this, right now, the ELL program for the middle school is here at Memorial. With this implementation, we're gonna be creating an ELL program at Long Joe.
Well, one already exists at Long Joe, but it's not a newcomer program. But this would add a second teacher, so Long Joe could have a newcomer program, Memorial, they would have equitable programs.
Right now, this is the...
What about McKay?
McKay has ESL teachers already there. There are ESL teachers at every school.
Okay.
And we'd be, I think her proposal was to add one to Crocker, because of numbers, one add, I think one was to add to McKay.
It's four, four new staff members.
Four new staff.
Out of that funding to meet the increased ELL needs. The really new piece is gonna be that newcomer program. Right now, this, any newcomer was sent here, didn't matter where they lived.
Okay.
So, now, there'll be a newcomer program at both schools, so one on both sides of the city.
Doesn't Rhengold have, like, a high emotional population, right, that's being serviced?
They have classrooms for special ed students, and those would stay. They get specialized transportation.
But what about, okay, so, if I live somewhere and I need to be at Rhengold...
Transportation is in their IEP.
It's, it's different busing, it's the...
So, there are people who will be going outside of their neighborhood because of a specialized program.
A specialized program, yes.
With transportation pay.
Yeah, and they're transported by van pool, which is, those are the small vans. So, now, you've created some efficiency for those very reasons of you have very specific needs, but they're not on a red, on a yellow bus, they're in a van pool bus going to that specific program.
Yep. So, do people no longer apply to go to McKay?
That hasn't been the process for some time.
Okay, that hasn't been...
No.
Okay. So, what, I'm just kinda curious, how do we understand an innovation school? Like, is it just that choice piece isn't a part of it?
I think that's another big conversation. And that's actually probably a conversation for the student programs, the student support committee.
Was that helpful?
Very.
Eva, very helpful.
I do empathize with the parents, I know they struggle with the times and everything, but we have to be thinking about the district and really...
So, communication's gonna be big, right? And I, and starting with the kindergarten is really key.
Yep.
But this, like, I just mentioned something that I thought might still be going on, and I'm on the school committee and it's not still going on. So, like, there's a lot of things that people don't really know, but they think they know.
Yeah, I talk to parents every day.
So, I think we should invite Lourdes to come to one of the student...
Yeah, okay.
Because on the other side of it, there's all kinds of initiatives and new initiatives that are happening with McKay that didn't exist before in terms of partnerships with Fitchburg Art Museum, stuff like that. So, there's a lot of new stuff, and we haven't visited it as a district in a while.
I just wanna say, based on the present, this is the first time I've seen this or heard about it, and I'm still learning about Fitchburg schools.
Me too.
But to me, it was very obvious that it wasn't something that you just thought up overnight. You gave a lot of thought to make sure that you had these overlaps that would allow you to be flexible, where you would assign students that would still be in the best interest of the student, but also would meet some of the economic needs in terms of busing.
Yeah.
And I think it's just a matter of being able to present this to everybody so they understand. And like you said, it's not like all of a sudden, next year, every kid's going to a different school.
No, no.
Doesn't like that at all.
And anyone who has questions, and so, this is just a, there's no vote tonight, but this will come back on the agenda, so if people hear this and they have questions, you know, they should contact Eva.
Yes, absolutely.
And ask her. And she has this map, which she wanted to bring, but it's...
She wouldn't let me bring it.
We have a map that actually, that actually puts a little dot over the whole map of the city. So, you see the dots, and you see where people are. That's where she started from. Okay, let's look at these dots, all right. Well, given that, what, how do we configure it, so?
And is this something that will be going to parents and hand up?
That's, so, the process would be that we'd write a letter indicating where their assignment would be with information about that school and this brochure for the 4th to 5th grade. The kindergarten, because we have in kindergarten enrollment night, I've had a parent session, not last week, the week before, and again, this Thursday night, for parents to come in who are enrolling in kindergarten. And of course, they can call me at any time, and I'd be glad to explain the process to them, yeah.
Eva, I just wanted to make a comment that this is, just looking at your brochure, it evokes what you intended to evoke, it's excellent, the family engagement. So, we can't forget that piece and think that it's all about busing and economics, it's really about...
No, no, it's not.
And to be clear, this conversation didn't start from busing.
Right.
Busing is a side benefit. This conversation started from looking at the city demographics and saying, why, why, it's basically, you know, you're doing the same thing, because you've always done it, but you're expecting different results. So, we realized we've been doing this for 25 years, and the conditions that were there that formed it are gone. So, it's time to look at it, so that's when I asked Eva, "Look at this, just pretend like none of this existed, and if you had to look at our population right now and where they're assigned, what would be a good way to do it?" And that's when she headed towards the neighborhood school, family engagement approach.
Those are important words to...
Right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She was terrified going after robotics and stormwater.
You can't, you can't feed people to stormwater.
I know, yeah, exactly. So, we're into now the donation component, so we have an approval of a donation of $1,071 to Fitchburg High School to be utilized to support a variety of student activities, and that is from Hannahford's Grocery. We have the approval of a donation of a used electric stapler. Wow, we really go down to the basics here. Used paper folding machine, estimated value of $20 to be utilized at Central Office, and that's from Kim Bellio. And then, as you know, I had worked with Derek DeSade here, as we were renovating the auditorium, I asked him, "Well, what do you need?" And we purchased, and they had like 30 different kinds of chairs for concerts and all of that, so we purchased all brand-new band chairs, the black ones with the stands and the rollers and everything else. I then went and watched the practice at Long Joe and realized that I think those 30 different kinds of chairs all got moved to Long Joe. So, I asked him, "Would you like a set of exactly the same thing for Long Joe?" He said, "Yes." So, that is what is here. So, it's basically duplicating exactly what we purchased here for his band program, and it'll be purchased for Long Joe. And it's the chairs, the stands that roll them around and allow you to pick them up, and then, he, it's an easel blackboard, a whiteboard on wheels that he can use, because the teaching goes on right on the stage. So, that's with that approval, and that would come out of school choice money. It, for me.
All right. We bundle 987 to 991.
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to have an executive session for the purposes of negotiation personnel. Mrs. Greenlee, would you hold the committee?
Yes, so, yea or nay? Mr. Stevens?
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Do we...
Yes, we did. We voted, yes.
I thought we voted to bundle them. Did we vote to approve them? Did we vote to approve them?
Okay, make a motion to approve the bundle.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thought so too, that's a good...
Sorry.
Good catch.
Sorry.
Mrs. Greenlee's going to...
Sorry, Mrs. Greenlee.
I'm not sure which order, I think it's just...
Just around the...
Okay.
No, just the school committee members.
Yea or nay? Mr. Horgan?
Yea.
Reynolds, yea?
Yes.
Yea, Philip Bell Pierce.
Yes.
We are going to an executive session, only to return to adjourn.